Are these ones taken?
I think somebody was just sitting there, but I don't know.
It is a no-brainer. Yeah. But it's like, how do you get that?
Did you see the designs? Did you feel bad?
We sure don't. We're not that fancy here.
Melanie.
There's black one.
You don't have to, but I saw it.
Who I am?
Yes.
So I could ask your question.
I always wonder about the, do they ever get? How they be in normal, though? Yeah. Where they can split out, if you got some.
Yeah.
Hi, welcome. Hi.
It's supposed to have a bush.
It's ugly.
Yeah, yeah. Better way to.
How we load this, can suppose you have these two? Yeah, you know, I'll be honest.
I married, I guess, three years ago.
That also matters. Oh, are you one of the speakers on Sunday? Wasn't that right? It was, yes.
Are this, I wasn't. So. No, I met.
I met.
And that's a lot.
It's just. So, in our hospital. East. Black on it, just feel like. Joy. Three. Keep, you know, keep going. Yeah. How's everybody doing today?
Great.
Decided for the warm weather. Although just some, somebody just told me it's getting cold tomorrow. Courtney said it's getting cold tomorrow. Which I have to say, I was kind of thankful for because I'm running Roby this weekend and I was pretty nervous that it's gonna be hot, so. Well, I'm warm and clean. It is great to have you all here for this month's Meet the Mayor. How I tend to start these, I appreciate the questions in advance and I'll go through those to kind of start the conversation. But how I start these is to kind of go around the room and share with me and with each other your name and the neighborhood in Boise that you live in. And from there, I'll kick off remarks. Marissa, I thought I saw you driving by. You're the lucky person that gets the last seat. Garrett, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Garrett Lamb. I work in the mayor's office.
Just, you know, Paul Luer, I live Kitty Corner, over in London, and what you're from.
Okay. Do you have kids at the school, Higgin?
No.
His wife was my piano teacher growing up.
No way. Last time there were a lot of connections that were made too. I like that there's already one. Nice to meet you.
I'm Art from Rome and I live also Claverdale on the Boise side. Call it bold and.
My name's Sophia Pender. I live in that east Boise, Black Hills area.
I'm Tom Cotto. I'm from the Colster area. I just happened to be downtown when I saw your Instagram post, so I decided to come up here.
Oh, great. Welcome.
I'm Beth Lacy. I live in West End Park area.
I'm Amelia Messenger. I live just down here on the bench.
I'm Hannah Andrews and I live right across the street.
I'm Pam Handfield. I live close to the library in Boise.
Hi, I'm Autumn Perillo. I live close to the Costco, right down the street.
Hi, I'm Dave Becker. I live Roosevelt Cutney, just down the street.
I'm Colleen Wector and I live right here on the bench.
I'm Marilyn Frazier. I live on Ness Pearson Whorley, about a block away.
I'm Les Givern. I live off of Colster and Hell.
Good morning. My name's Connor Mullins and I'm in the Colster neighborhood as well.
Hi, I'm Gwen Chapman. I live off of Rose Hill and I'm also your Depot Bench Neighborhood Association board member.
The Depot Bench was at the Depot on San Diego.
We were there. So many people in each of us.
And I'll talk about that a little bit, but I'm still glad you guys are there.
My name's Jazz Alexis, so I live in southwest Boise.
I'm Cameron Kinzer. I live right next to Capitol High School.
I'm Trina Elsasser and I live in the Depot Bench area.
My name's Jared. I live Boise, west central Boise.
I'm Melanie Osman and I live in west Boise.
I'm Scott Cleveland and I live in the GC, Garden City.
Ben Jacob, southwest Boise.
Doug Trouble, southeast Boise, back Garfield, elementary.
Chris Ross, west Boise.
Shelby, I live down by DSU.
Ashley, I'm on west end Boise.
Jordan Morales, Columbia Village.
I'm Eric. I live in like Cola Euston area.
Adam Bass, I live down in Garden City also. Don't kick us out.
Matthew, I live in Roseville, lived here 40 years.
Hi, Melanie, live Depot Bench. My kids went to it.
Tony, I live Depot Bench as well.
I'm Marissa. I live on Corvada and mystery.
And we've got the Saw Woman's.
Hello. Hello. Why don't we go back to you? Your name and neighborhood.
Judy Sargent, I live on the bench.
And then, how are you?
Me?
Oh, no, I'm looking behind you. And I've got a team of people from Boise that you probably met when you walked in. And folks will help me keep track if there are questions I am not able to answer today. We'll get back in touch with you. It's really great to have everybody. I want to first thank the team here. For those of you that are in the neighborhood, probably know that this is one of our community schools. It's a pretty special place. This space right here and next door is a partnership with the school district in the city. And kiddos can be here after school and their programs in the summer. We do quite a bit of programming. It's parks and rec staff that are here. And there are a couple of different community schools throughout Boise City. And this was one of the early ones. And Barb English, who runs this program, has been with us from the beginning, helped to set it all up. So you might have seen her on your way in. She's in the office there. I wanted to start with some of the questions that I got and then jump into work we're doing and have a conversation. First off, I'll address the flag right off. I got communication last night from the sheriff and the attorney general. It's under review and at this time, we'll continue to fly the flags that we've historically flown. And address all the other questions that I got from Boiseans about the work that we're doing for you and how government is working to create opportunity here in Boise and what we're focusing to focus on. And so many of the things that you touched on in advance were part of that. So I'll go through those and then let's have a conversation about more. First off, one of the questions I got this time, and I got it last time too, was how are actions in DC impacting our work? Particularly in the area of housing or housing assistance? Then I got a question a little later about some other things. So I'll divide those up. But first off, we're monitoring what's happening right now. We still have some grants that are moving forward, which we're very pleased to see. And I need to be clear with Boiseans that we've been doing quite a bit of work because of partnership we've had with really hard demonstrate needs with regard to housing. Put in for grants, when we get those grants, we get to work to implement them. And the reality is, in this unknown time through this transition, there could well be changes, but we will continue to do the work that we're funded to do. And if there are pullbacks, it means that we won't be able to do the work in the same way. With that said, I'm very happy to be able to say that right now, one of the grants that we were concerned about, which addresses homelessness in the younger population, the youth population, which we see rising here and around the country, we got that grant at the end of the year. We were able to restart that work about two weeks ago and have some planning underway right now with regard to meeting the needs of folks that are coming to Boise from throughout the state that are younger. And so working with a group of people and nonprofit service providers in that space. And then I did want to talk in general about our housing work because housing has been a focus. And during COVID, we had access to emergency funds that, and I think those were some of the ones that might have been referred to when part of the question was about rental assistance. And, oh, and I should say, I'm sorry, Jordan. Jordan Morales, a council member who has part of this area on the bench, represents part of this area as well. But during COVID, we had emergency rental assistance dollars. We put those to work to keep people housed in partnership with nonprofit service providers in the area. And most recently, our last round of, we call them URAP dollars for short, but Emergency Rental Assistance Program dollars. The county had some and we had some. And together, we collaborated on a housing development, affordable housing development that's right here in Boise, using those dollars. So we both used dollars during the emergency for short-term solutions and then invested some of those dollars in long-term solutions too, to meet housing needs. And that, and the housing development, it was a partnership, was just the final level of approval by the city council took place, what, a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, about? But in general, when we look at housing, we focus on market-based solutions. So making sure that our, the ordinances that we offer create space for more homes in Boise, so that people that live here can work here. We've looked at public-private partnerships to meet needs where the market might not respond on its own. That project that I just mentioned with cooperation with the county is a great example of that. Private developer, city land, some county funds and then private funds. Those homes will be built for Boise and then owned and maintained by a private developer and private owner. We have housing developments like that all throughout the city. That's been part of our work in private, public-private partnerships. And then also looking at how we can incentivize more and make it easier for folks to build homes in Boise. Kathy Corless, the other council member that has the portion of the votes, just joined us. Welcome Kathy. And then I also am working with Mayor Meridian, Mayor Mount Home, and we're advocating on increase, with our federal delegation, on the importance of increasing tax credits that are available to developers to build homes. You might hear developers say, "Like that." It's low-income housing tax credits. They need those to help kind of create the capital staff with their loans and other things to be able to build homes. And there's a limited number of those in our state and others. And we are working to protect the ones that exist now and the delegation is very supportive of that. And then working alongside, as I said, both Robert and Meridian, the mayor of Mount Home, to encourage that there in the next budget round be more available, both in Idaho, but other cities are asking for this one. So appreciate that partnership. And then on affordability in general, I had an interesting conversation with somebody the other day and he mentioned to me how he finds, he grew up without a lot of means, been very successful. But he was reflecting this last weekend when he was down on the green belt and he was up at the depot actually, at the depot celebration, how many things there are to do for families where you don't have to pay for them. And that really has been a focus of ours, is how do we create a safe and vibrant and welcoming community with opportunity and fun for families of all walks of life? And we are so lucky to be in Boise where we have access to pathways and parks and libraries and pools and different, and green belts and hills where you really can get out and have fun with your kids without spending a lot of money. And we're looking at more ways to share the opportunities with the public as inflation goes up and down, the costs are rising, both here and nationally, it's going to become even more important. And I want us to serve as a clearinghouse, if you will, for how we can effectively raise our kids and have great lives in affordable ways, but also what resources exist. So stay tuned for more of that. We're starting to work on that now. Another question I got was, and this, the next two really kind of, I think, go, in many ways, they connect to each other. One was about how do we say yes to new housing because we know we need it, but also at the same time, protect our communities as we know them and love them? And then the next question, I don't know if it came in this order, but this is how I saw it, was how do we both recognize and allow for growth, but prevent sprawl if possible? And so those are both connected and separate questions, and so I'll kind of talk through that. And if anybody has any ideas or thoughts on reflections on this, I'd love to hear it. Because when I think about new housing and protecting our communities, when I knock on doors and we were talking, we were working on the modern zoning code, and Tony here was involved with that, but is also on, you were too. Marissa was involved too, but was also on the planning and zoning commission. But right now, the McLean's of Boise need one home. And we've got two kids and it is our sincere hope and desire that when our kids finish school, have, you know, done a little something, something, that they, like Garrett, decide to come home. And then the McLean's of Boise are going to need three homes. And so we, I think we all want for our kids this ability for us to have homes in our neighborhoods and also like keep what we love about Boise. And a lot of that is the connections we have to each other, the places we call home. Boise is so vibrant because of the neighborhoods. And so when we look at more housing, we want folks to be able to live in our neighborhoods, as I think about it, to live amongst us, rather than just drive through us. So yes, our region will continue to grow and some of that from one's perspective might be sprawl, but we need homes in all of these cities. But we want to make sure that we're making it possible for people to live in Boise, to live with us and then to contribute to that community and that sense of neighborliness that we all love. And it is tough as neighborhoods transition. Last night, we had a hearing at city council and there was a woman in her mid-30s and she lives right across the street from, in a condo or apartment complex that's being removed on Boise and Vermont Ave. And she supported the project while many others nearby didn't. But what I heard both in her reason for support was that, yes, my neighborhood will change, but these will be my neighbors and we need homes. My friends need homes. But from folks that oppose it, what was the concern, that with more development, we're going to see less connection to each other. And that is why when we look at investments we're making in parks, in pathways, in keeping crime down, in doubling our tree canopy, it's designed in a way to encourage as much of that connection as we've all historically enjoyed. Whether it be up here in the bench, the north end, in southeast or west Boise, we have those connections. And in many areas of our city, we've grown and we've been concerned. I, you know, I think about it too, to be honest. We used to go downtown, know everybody and now you're lucky to see somebody you know. But we've gotten through it and then we've all lived to find another day to protect Boise that we love. Because at the end of the day, it's about this city and the connections in our vibrant neighborhoods. And so our desire is to continue to strengthen neighborhoods, to protect the community of Boise while allowing for more homes, so that my kids can have their own homes with their kids and then their kids can have their own homes. While we're all probably still living, because we're all living longer, right? So our city will keep growing, but we are going to remain committed to investing in what has made Boise Boise over the years. On lost funding, so folks ask specifics about funding that we've lost. There's two that we have lost. One is money that this whole region received and it was given to nonprofits to support planting trees. The Treasure Valley Tree Canopy Network received, I want to say a million dollars, to work in Ada County and Canyon County to plant trees. We had set up a program already and we're going to apply for grants on our own and then decided to collaborate with them so we weren't competing against each other. Unfortunately, they've even spent money that they're not yet being refunded, reimbursed for through the grant that's been pulled back. In Boise, we're trying to figure out, could we? In Boise, we're trying to figure out, because we'd already built out a Trees Challenge that I want to share with you, because somebody asked about tree rules. But in other cities, they're actually having to just scale back completely. And in our minds, when we talk about affordability, this, even trees impact affordability. Because if we can plant more trees and double our tree canopy as we desire to do, we're going to provide a little bit of cooling in our neighborhood that will provide a little bit of relief in how much air conditioning you might need to use, even if it's just at night in those summer months, and drop your bills just a little bit a day. And so, when we think about planting trees, and as I said, our goal is to double the network, the tree canopy in Boise by 2030, and that would put our tree canopy at thirty percent. Which I was surprised by, because we say we're the city of trees, so I'd expect to double our tree canopy would be like, I don't know, eighty percent, something, something really big. But we started at eleven percent back in the day, and thirty percent is actually quite high for urban areas around the country. So, we are making, we're going to, we're going to meet our goals. And the other fun goal that the council members supported and others supported with Treasure Valley Tree Canopy Network was we planned a seedling in the Boise National Forest for every Boise resident. And we did that because those trees protect our water that comes through the Boise River, that provides lots of cooling and sun and water that we need for ag and everything else in the summer. And it was a great strategy to help protect that water in the long run. And we had so many volunteers that wanted to help us that we beat the goal. We finished that last year, and our goal had been by 2030, we could plant two hundred thirty-five thousand seedlings in the Boise National Forest. We are still working on our tree canopy goal with tree captains. So, if you are in a neighborhood or, and you want to get involved in helping to, you count trees, you track trees, you organize people to plant trees, we will take your name, Andrew's got a pad, he'll take it at the end of the day, and we'll get you connected with the Treasure Valley Tree Canopy Network, because they're organizing the tree captains. And we're going to keep at our goal of using volunteers to double the tree canopy, to help cool our neighborhoods and save everybody money. Oh, and we had done heat mapping, and so we actually know where the hottest neighborhoods are. And if the city's doing trees separate from the volunteer tree captains in the neighborhoods, we're going to those areas that have the least amount of trees to try to ramp up the trees that are there. Somebody asked about tree rules in Boise. And I asked my daughter to go get the ordinance specifically, and then the person that I asked to do that is sick today. So, I didn't get it from her, so we will get you specifics, we'll follow up after on specifics. But I can tell you what I know. And that is that when developers take down trees, when they're developing, we do ask for trees to be replanted. This person had proposed two-to-one, right now, we require one-to-one, and they have to be like a certain thickness. I think it's like a level three tree, maybe fifteen calibers or something like that, I could be way off. But Andrew will get the ordinance to the person that asked us. But I got to say, like, it's not perfect. Because there are instances when we've got projects that are being built and the tree, and trees that we've said, you got to hold on to, their roots either get messed up in the construction. And then if our, if our tree people determine that they're just not viable anymore, then they have to come out. I mean, we don't want to see that happen, but I, I wouldn't be telling the truth if I said it never happened, it does. And then in instances like that, we actually do seek to work with the person responsible and ask them to do more trees than just like the one baby tree for the big tree that died. But it all, it depends on what the, what the law looks like and how that all works out. But appreciated the suggestion that we look at like that two-for-one count or how we make sure that we aren't doing the tree canopy and things like that, because it's really our type of environment.
Can you like sort of interrupt?
Oh, not at all.
Notify the city if you have, say, a developer in your neighborhood who is notorious for cutting down trees?
Yes. In fact, many people do. So, you, you wouldn't be stepping out of the norm to do that. And if you call just the main number, you'd be connected with code enforcement, and then Planning Development Services Code Enforcement starts to look into that. And there have been some instances that where projects have had to come back before the city council when something that's deemed to be egregious has happened, and we have to figure out like how to hold that person accountable. Yeah?
So, if the code, I mean, if the goal of thirty percent canopy per, point thirty, so i- in, in the planning and regulations, rules for development, do the developers have to adhere to putting in thirty percent canopy?
Well, if they don't have to necessarily do thirty percent on their property, but that's thirty percent coverage citywide, but yes, they have, in the design review process, as now, I think in the modern zoning code, it's more design review, because they look at landscape plans and everything else. And anytime we see something at the council, when the council's weighing it, whether it be on appeal or final approval, we're looking directly at where the trees are supposed to be planted, what they're supposed to be, all of that stuff.
But, and so, is there a set thing? So, because there, if they go to a lot that has no trees, and then you're saying replacement, but do they have, there must be regulations, and that they have to have a certain amount of trees per area?
Yes, and thanks for that differentiation, because I was talking about what's taken has to be replaced. But yes, when, in fact, the plan that we saw last night, it might be one or two trees, if I remember the pictures, but the diagrams show trees along the whole perimeter, and so that becomes part of the landscaping plan that's required. But like in my, in my neighborhood, in my house, I'm looking at a tree that's getting older and older and older and hanging more and more and more over my garage, and we're getting really nervous, because every time it's windy, things fall. And we know that we'll have to take that out at some point, and, but I also know that you can't replace that big tree, but we're starting to think about, okay, then how do we, how do we plant trees to provide that shade? That's what we're trying to do around the city, because as, as the canopy ages too, we're tracking that. So, somebody asked me about legalizing weed in the city, and I laugh because I haven't had this question in like five years. Maybe because people just started going to Oregon and stopped worrying about it here, I don't know what it is. But I didn't want to ignore it either. And this is, you know, if the state legalized weed, it's legal everywhere. And I believe that there's actually an effort to make it even more illegal than it already is in Idaho. And so, I'm not, I, I do not think that the state will be legalizing weed. But they, they determine what are crimes, and they have determined that marijuana is a crime. The city's not going to change that. Somebody asked me how to get involved. And actually, I didn't even plan this, but I'm sitting to two, next to two residents that are involved on different commissions and volunteer capacity.
Tripping over my own feet over here.
Oh, do you want to see?
Oh, no.
Okay.
I can't hear, so it's better I can stand.
Oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry.
No, it's okay.
I can stand.
No, 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 I'm able to read your lips from where I was, I just tripped over my own foot.
Oh, okay. The, we have a lot of volunteer opportunities, and I'd love to see people show up and say they want to get involved. And there's all different levels of engagement that are possible. And it can be as little time as showing up at something like this, to be honest. I mean, this is, you're getting involved. We have, often, we have different opportunities to take feedback from residents. We've had, when we've made decisions on our water renewal facility, for instance, and what we're going to do with the water bond four or five years ago, and how we're going to build out, making sure that we've got ample water, but also clean water in the future. And that was, that plan that the city put together was the result of hundreds of Boiseans showing up at a meeting like this to give feedback on what they wanted, or picking up the phone and answering a survey. And so, there, there are things like that that are ongoing right now. We've got opportunities, we just finished listening sessions on the library's strategic plan, because we need to make a plan for the next twenty years for the library. And that means what services are offered, where we need to have brick and mortar, what people like about the libraries now, what they'd like to see more of or less of. And we just finished up that opportunity for people to engage, but we're always open to more feedback. Right now, we have some climate action conversations going. We have a committee of about twenty Boiseans that are tasked with developing a playbook for residents for how to engage. And some of that is, they're going to be talking to us about what more composting residents want and how residents can help compost more, although that's hard, because ninety-nine percent of Boiseans are a part of the program. But there'll be actions like that, tree planning will be part of that. So, they'll, you know, they're, they're taking feedback from Boiseans right now, and you can engage in those. I think they're called community climate conversations. And then they'll be writing up a recommendation to myself and the city council. We also have boards and commissions. So, when I was in my twenties, I started on the Parks Board and served, I think we went once a month and went to the library, and my kids were both little. And we planned for parks. In fact, some of the parks that we're now seeing being developed were parks that, like, I looked at and considered twenty years ago when we were trying to decide whether or not the city should buy particular pieces of land for parks. So, it's very impactful work, and we're always looking for folks. In fact, more often than not, I'm looking for people to put on different committees. Parks is one of them. Planning and zoning, Tony serves on, is another. I served on that after I was on the Parks Board. We've got design review commissions, but we've got electric board, building code boards, if you're in the trades and have expertise and want to engage, a lot of opportunities. And so, I'd encourage you to reach out to my office if you would like to be involved, because we'd love to connect you with something that might match. And I really think, and then there's also the neighborhood associations, I'm just thinking about you with Deco Bench. I was involved in my neighborhood association before I ended up being a city volunteer. And neighborhood associations have great opportunities and impact, pulling people together, writing plans. You're, you've been a leader of your neighborhood association, writing plans, working with the city on ideas that they have impacting parks in your neighborhood. And so, there's a lot of ways that you can engage both officially with the city, but then neighborhood adjacent organizations throughout the city as well. And happy to connect you and with anybody you might want to have a conversation with, because I think it's really valuable work. And it's that engagement that makes Boise really unique, that keeps us connected, protects our community, and also helps us remain that safe and vibrant place that we call home. So, thank you for your interest in that. And then the final question, before I talk about what's happening in this district, was on homelessness. And this question in particular focused on trauma-based care, but I'd like to talk a little bit more broadly about what we're doing to prevent the problems of other cities. I am not an expert in trauma-based care. I can tell you that we work with nonprofits in this community that are and that do want to see more, as the person that asked this question, more opportunities to have trauma-informed care, not just in the space serving folks experiencing homelessness, but in many elements of our community, because we see this impact of mental health and struggled with mental health rising in Boise across the country, across the state. But for our homelessness work, we're doing a couple of things. And it kind of goes back to what I talked about in housing. Supporting nonprofits providers that provide service, partnering with the private development community to build homes, working with groups like Full Circle Health and others to meet the needs and the service needs, mental health, drug addiction needs, support service needs that folks exiting homelessness have. As well as making sure that we do everything we can to prevent it, which is working with groups like Jesse Tree to prevent eviction. On, one thing that I'm particularly excited about is we set a goal of two hundred fifty homes for folks exiting homelessness, because you don't want to have homelessness, you've got to get them off the streets. Two hundred fifty homes for folks exiting homelessness by 2026. And at this point, we have more than two hundred fifty homes that are in various stages of development because of partnership with private development nonprofit community. And we also have philanthropists and businesses that are investing in the community foundations. They have a fund now to cover the cost of those wraparound services to get people self-sufficient once they're housed. And we have developers around this region that have dedicated apartments in their apartment complexes to families exiting homelessness. And so, we, it's been all hands-on depth, and so many folks involved in making sure that we can tackle this issue head-on with long-term solutions, while also making sure that we've got the short-term solutions of mental health services, trauma-informed care. Catch is a great example of connecting folks and rapidly rehousing them. And then we've funded Catch and other organizations so that they have street teams, which connects the people with the services, they try to exit them in the homes. So, this is something that's not just the city, right? This is, this is so many people and deep partnership and commitment to making sure that we don't make mistakes that other cities have.
You mentioned preventing evictions, so are you saying that if someone can't afford to live in a place anymore, they can't pay their bill, you're preventing landlord from evicting them?
The, Jesse Tree is an organization that helps clients work through the legal process that they're due, because as, the best way to prevent folks being on the streets is to keep them housed. And so, they work with making, getting them set up with payments so that they can correct the missed payments they might have had, or do other things that they need to do to stay housed.
So, Jesse Tree is giving them tax dollars to afford?
Jesse Tree is a nonprofit private organization.
Well, okay, but they don't need tax dollars to nonprofits.
The, Our Path Home, or New, Our Path, New Path, no, Our Path Home, which is the continuum of care. And all of these nonprofit organizations in the city and the region, it's a county-based thing, work together to make sure that they're filling the gaps and meeting needs of residents that are in the city.
But a lot of them are getting grant money for that, like Jeff Bezos gives money to Catch.
But it's not just grant money, it's also tax dollars. Which is tax dollars.
Yes, we've made investment in homes.
To keep people and children at homes, which is what I'm okay with my tax dollars going to.
But if someone's not okay with it, then they're not being represented, are they? And we're an inclusive city, we need to represent everybody, right? So, you can't choose sides.
I'm really proud of Boiseans for the clarity they've provided in our focus on preventing and ending homelessness. That we are a city that takes care of people, knows that we can learn from the mistakes of other cities, that we can do it in a Boise way, and we can deliver to demonstrate that it works. And there's groups like Catch and Jesse Tree that defy the odds in the heart and passion that they put into this work in getting folks rapidly rehoused if they've been evicted, or helping them stay in their home by correcting what they need to correct so that they're not evicted. We've got groups like Terry Riley and Full Circle Health that support those wraparound services when we get folks off the streets into homes built by the private market, so that they can become self-sufficient. We've got groups like the Rescue Mission that takes people all the way through from homelessness transition to liftoff, in my own language, that are key partners in the city that allow us to make the progress that we're making and ensure that as we grow and housing becomes more expensive, that we're doing everything we can to mitigate that, and then not letting what's happened in other places happen here. And that's being made possible because of the commitment, focus, and connection Boiseans have at this place. And I'm so proud of each and every one of you that is a part of that, and I thank you for that. Now, what's happening?
I'm a property manager since two thousand nine, and there are rules and stuff to that, like they're not saving everybody.
I'm a landlord, I'm a property manager as well.
Okay.
I've got a, I've got a question here.
Well, I was glad that you brought up like housing and trees. Because whenever I hear housing and homelessness, it is an issue. But then there's also housing for the wildlife and ecosystems. And so, with trees being discussed in our built environment and having to replace those, I'd also like to see like a mechanism for developers that are benefiting from the channelization of the Boise River and the ability to develop really close to it, to try to encourage tree planting for the natural environment that will also help homes for wildlife, birds, and other animals. So, I, I hope to see some sort of mechanism like that in the future, because we're losing our black cottonwood forest that has a shallow root system, and we see them falling into the river. And it takes a long time for them to grow. And then they fall in, because they grow so tall. So, there's a really dynamic environment there, and I, there's something there where I feel like another mechanism could help out.
Oh, I appreciate that suggestion. That's not something I can say that I've thought about specifically in terms of our role in that. Are you part of the Boise River Action Network?
Uh, there's the Boise River Enhancement Network.
Oh, that's what I meant, yeah.
I served on the board of that for a little bit. And, yeah, I think that they do a great job of helping out with plantings. I'm not sure if I've noticed any mechanisms that really kind of.
They've asked us for, to think about something. They've also applied for grants and partnership with other organizations for some river habitat restoration work.
Yeah.
That I'm thinking about. And when you're talking about cottonwoods, I started thinking about how all of us are going to start sneezing and crying very soon.
I always say that's other trees, that's other trees. Cottonwoods, we need cottonwoods, so we don't want to denigrate them. It's other trees, it's the native, it's the same basis.
I do love that.
Just a hopefully quick question. Is there legislation where like, so with the one-to-one tree ratio, is there the same thing with a Is there the same thing with apartment complexes per se? Like where there's a certain amount of low-income apartments per building? And, or maybe in the future or currently, is there a, you know, a, a tax credit that they could receive? If they commit to more low-income tax apartments?
Yeah, I really appreciate that question. We have determined that rather than mandating, there's a technical word for that. Like where a certain number have to be in a development. I can't think of it right now because we don't do it. But we've decided that rather than doing that, that has mixed results, to be honest, around the country. Some people would say that's not true, that there's great results. Other people say that's not true, they're terrible results. I'll say they're mixed results. Then instead of that, we're, we're looking at different ways to incentivize it. So with our zoning code update, there's some affordability incentives. When, and, and with those incentives, so right now at, on State Street, there's an apartment complex being built. Cause what we determined was that for the deeply affordable, the market doesn't respond and didn't build. In the same way that they'll respond to workforce housing. And that's where Governor Little got involved with the Housing Trust Fund to, for, like, think of like teachers and firefighters, workforce housing rates. You can go to the state for that. And we've tried to figure out how we can kind of spur the market to build affordable housing and have some requirements. But to do that through incentives and, and, or public-private partnership. By Tax School at State and Arthur, there will be, I think it's a hundred seventy-six homes that are being built right now. It's right, it's pretty close to the street, you'll notice it if you're heading out that way. Ten percent of those will be for families exiting homelessness. But that is a project that was on city land. We had, we took the best proposal and so it was this one that'll have childcare that'll open as well. I think they opened this fall. They did the Homes for Families Exiting Homelessness and regular apartments as well at all different income levels right there. And so we're, we're seeking to do it that way.
Well, and I look like unconsciously, you know, finding companies and, and people that want to do that. Keeps Boise Boise also. Like we want to have those people in our community that, you know, find ways where, you know, they're not in it for necessarily the buck. Where they're in it to grow a community also.
I'm gonna tell Anderson Construction is building that.
Yes.
And the Pacific Company is, it's the developer, what you said today.
Yeah, cause I think that is important to find not just the quick answer. So what if there's an empty lot for ten years, you know, before you find the right builder that is going to build a community? I think that's awesome. So yeah, um, well, that's good to know. Cause it's kind of interesting that we have a mandate on not to, not to denigrate the beauty of a tree. But you know, there's a mandate for a tree, but not for a person.
The other development, it's nearby here, it's in this district.
Is it Kathy, is it yours? Oh, no, Kathy had to leave. Jordan, is it your or Kathy's district?
Franklin is Kathy's district.
Kathy's district? Um, at Franklin, I worked for that, I don't know if you guys noticed that one. It's kind of like a, a dark.
It's hard to miss.
It's hard to miss. It's large, it's right, it's right on the street. And there's walk-up places on the front, so there's front porches along the road. It's next to Franklin Park, which I, I climbed and went down that slide when we first opened it. And it felt so tall and I saw it the other day and now it looks so small because it's not just an empty lot. But that was, is another example of public-private partnership. Those homes range from studios to three bedrooms. Ten percent of them are for families exiting homelessness. Giraffe Laft will be opening their childcare center for eighty-nine kids on the property, I think this summer, we just toured it. Oh, May, oh, that's right, the week of May fifteenth, May, so what is that, May sixteenth, that Friday?
Friday, Monday, nineteenth.
Monday, the nineteenth, the first kids will come through. And it's right next to a park across from a grocery store and that was another public-private partnership. That's what we're seeking to encourage the private market to join forces and do in our city.
I was so skeptical about that project and then the outcome of it was actually really nice. Where you have a park and, and those homes that already exist are now looking at a park and a nice apartment building. Instead of that Franklin Road and the grocery store. And so the whole block is nicer to be in when you go inside of it.
Oh, like when you're in the park, if you feel a little warm.
Right, so how it looks on Rose Hill can be obtrusive. But when you walk through the steps to the public community area of it, you will see that it made the whole community a better space to be in. So it was really successful in that way. And it does look really different than it does from Franklin Road when you go inside.
And there's, there's a whole bunch of art on the walls there too. So you see that when you're at the daycare or when you're at the park and, and there's a, I'll call you next, sir. There's, there's steps from Franklin, is that Franklin or Orchard, from Orchard?
I think the steps are from Franklin.
Franklin?
Yeah.
From the grocery store side that's open to the public. It actually takes you up over the parking lots, you don't have to walk through the cars. And then you get great views of the park and the art. And then you can head down into the park and be in that space. Yes?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. My question has to do with, at the beginning of the meeting, you brought up the issue of the flag. We're all well aware that the state legislature, legislature has recently passed a state law banning the use of certain flags on said properties. And my question is a simple one. If that is the law of the state of Idaho, why not just follow the law?
Sure, I got letters from both the sheriff and the attorney general yesterday, as I said. We're reviewing those and right now we're sticking with the flag we've always flown.
Could I follow up on that?
That is a non-answer.
That's my answer.
Do you follow the law every day?
Could I follow up on that?
Do you screen?
Doesn't, doesn't a person, a person, a mayor that chooses to disobey the law?
So are you encouraging people to drink the law?
Sounds like that's what he's promoting.
Send a clear message that it's okay for citizens to disobey the law?
Does he follow the law? Do you drink and drive?
No, I don't.
I was being respectful, I answered a legitimate question, I asked a legitimate question.
Yeah, are you referring to a specific flag in particular or?
We all know.
The flags that are not, that are going to be legal by the new law. I, I am with him, I would like to know why.
Can you list the flag that you're talking about? Can you name it?
It doesn't matter.
Have you read the law? Have you read the law?
Will you name it though?
It's a, it's a, it's a law.
We're just getting into arguing here, I don't think that's productive. So, Mayor?
I think the mayor knows what law, what the law has, is. And what it pertains to, I would hope, with regards to the new law. And so I think I'm a little bit with him is, when you first brought it up, you kind of, I felt like, you know, you were kind of laughing it off. And I think a lot of us take it very seriously. And there are times personally where, I mean, it just seems like your focus is on, you know, I've never seen a Christian flag be flown.
What's the Christian flag?
There is one.
Um, I appreciate that, appreciate the feedback. Hearing from a lot of Boiseans and as I said, we received communication last night. Got a respectful relationship with both of those folks, we're reviewing it. And our policy stands as it has, which is we're flying the flag because historically flown.
But I would say that means I don't have to obey the law if you don't have to.
We're gonna move on, I answered, I answered that question, yes, sir.
Okay, I wanna go back, I have a specific question while we still have time about, more about housing.
Sure.
And so now I know there's some local groups.
I can't remember what neighborhood you're in, sorry.
I'm in, me?
Yeah.
Cole and Houston.
Okay, that's right.
Cole and Houston. So I know there are some local groups that are, that are actually promoting more legislation. And, and, and rule, and laws in the cities about protecting people from, from predatory apartment complex managers raising the rent. So I, I just wondered if, I know they've talked to you before and I'm just curious if anything new has come on that or are you, y'all still talking about that?
Sure, you know, Allie Robbie worked on that at this legislative session and I, and hands, hands, hands up or kudos to her for attempting that. Councilmember Hallie Burton, were you on the council with this task?
No.
He had worked on some tenant protection work. And, and those were preemptive retroactively by the legislature. And Allie keeps working on that to bring some of those protections back. I had a mom, I mean, a mom talk to me about her adult child the other day. And they had put in and spent seven, eight hundred bucks on rental application fees. And, and still, just to be turned down the next day at multiple places. This is what we, we were trying to get at and Allie Robbie is, is still working on. There's an interim committee that the legislature put on housing for this summer. I think she's a part of that and they'll be looking at all, all sorts of potential strategies. Not just for renter protections and against predatory landlords. But also how to increase the amount of housing that's available in communities around the state.
Could you do, find a predatory landlord, Mayor?
I, I couldn't, I imagine there's a legal word, but that was the question that you asked me.
Thank you.
So what's happening in the district? Yes, sir.
Well, Paul, again, I just want to thank both you and other council members for, for, I guess one had to take off, but for showing up. I guess I want to make maybe a personal plea and just on the flag issue. There, um, I think it's, it's quite possible to, to fly flags that are by their very nature divisive. And that alienate a great percentage of the population, a great number of constituents. And so my own personal plea is just that that represents a, an ideology and a worldview. That I myself and I know many others just find very alienating. And so I, I would just like to make a plea and just ask that you would appreciate those differences. And I don't want my city to be representing me in a way that fundamentally, I, that's, that's not me. So just more of a plea than anything.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And we're gonna, I hear you, we're gonna disagree on that, but I appreciate the face of it. And thank you.
Yeah, the other thing I would just mention is you, you mentioned that it's being done historically. But what's the historical timeframe? And so I think Boise City has a great, great history that does not involve that very divisive symbol. And, and so I, I think we're kind of begging the question if we appeal to history. Cause I can appeal to much more of Boise's history that where we were not doing that. And we were not alienating so many of our citizens.
Thank you. I've got Hannah. And then I want to tell folks before we end what's happening in the district.
I'm curious around, like as summers are getting warmer and I'm hearing this conversation around tree canopy.
Yeah.
Is there efforts around like spaces downtown where trees can't necessarily grow big for providing shade and relief from heat for pedestrians?
You might have stumped me on such a simple question. I can't, I, I, I can't answer that right now, but we could get back to you on if, I mean, because you're right. You can't have trees everywhere downtown. We're not, I'm not aware of shades, like cooling shelter, I don't know if that's what you're referring to efforts. The, in the parks that we're building, we are seeking to do shade covers and trees. But we can get to more on that. And I, and I actually say that that's something that should go into the, the climate committee kind of feedback as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks Hannah. Okay, the district.
Can I just say thank you for what you're doing?
Oh, thank you, very much.
Mayor, would you, would you consider putting the ten KMs back in the park, Julia Davis Park? Your previous, the previous mayor took them out, they were there since nineteen sixty-four. I figure what year they're removed, now it's on private property in front of a church across from the Capitol.
Sure, it's in a great site.
Would you, would you support putting it back in the park?
I think it's in a great spot.
So you're saying no? It's hostile towards Christianity? Where's, where's the inclusion?
There are, there are a lot of people.
I think where's your tolerance is a better question.
Talk about what's happening in Boise. And in this district, District Four.
There are actual issues to address.
These are real.
We're trying to map stuff. I'm gonna ask everybody to just be respectful and let's, let's finish this off well.
We would like that too.
This is a map of the district. I mentioned that this is a community school. I am super excited and the council was very involved in this. The school district has partnered with us, but we're building a pool here. Not on school grounds, but the school district is giving the city space, a site. And we're in the design phases right now. And so some of you might have, and might have engaged in that process where we decided how best to meet pool needs in the city. Got those, I love them myself, my kids went, you know, always used the round pools when they were growing up. Not many people liked them, but I loved them. But the one at South, we're gonna come up with a creative way to use it in a different way. And wanted to invest in this neighborhood with a new pool. And so I'm super excited about that and I think about the, I can't remember now, but I think it's four thousand kids that'll be able to walk safely to this pool. When it's, or four thousand Boiseans, sorry. And they'll be able to walk safely to this pool when it's built. And so we looked again at our goal of having a ten-minute walk to a park, a safe walk to a park and guiding us. And so where best to build a new pool. And then the school district showed up and said, we want to partner and this makes sense. So we're really excited about that, yeah.
Sorry, is there, are there any plans to have pedestrian crossings along Overland?
Oh, good question. I will ask Andrew to get back to you on that, cause I don't know the specifics on that right now.
If one were to want to request one, should I do it, you know, like a regular citizen? Or like because this is going to, like, we live on the other side, but my daughter goes to school here.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend calling, we're not in charge of roads. So it's the Ada County Highway District, we can connect you with the right person, so you're not calling around. But also there's value in, in approaching with the school. And I imagine that as we build out the park or the pool, that we'd be looking at that too. So registering it with us as something we need to be thinking about in the design piece. Because all those safe cross, crossings actually help open up access to more people to be able to walk safely to a park within ten minutes. And Kathy is, is your councilwoman for this district. Kath Corliss. Each of the council members in their districts are super helpful in those kind of specific district meetings like that too and helping shuttle those through. Um, so the Whitney Pool, I did want to talk about, uh, we had a transit hearing this week. And this district has Vista and that's one of our best-in-class. There's not a lot of buses that run every fifteen minutes, but the Vista bus is one of them. Council heard from residents related to investing in public transit. Right now, we are investing the maximum that we're able to do financially in these constrained times. And, and we invest more than other cities do, we're making sure that that's focused on Boise service. And Vista has one or two, two routes actually, they go up and down. I just wanted to flag that because it's a route that the bus system, working with the city. Jordan sits on the bus board, has sought to make run more often to get people up to the airport to work, et cetera. And the Depot. I wanted to just make sure that everybody knows, this is the last night of the Boise Depot celebration. On Sunday, we had, gosh, over three thousand people go through for tours and activities. When you showed up there, when I showed up there, it was so fun. It felt like you were at a train station where a whole bunch of people were going somewhere. Cause it was so busy and loud and there were all these different folks with train sets set up, kid activities, et cetera. That was our kickoff. Every night since Sunday, so four nights total after tonight. And we selected two Boiseans, they're Boise State grads and they were MFA grads. And they have developed a digital art installation for the depot. So if you haven't gone, I'd really encourage you to go up tonight. There's more to do tonight that I'll tell you about, but if you can't do anything else, show up at eight forty-five and watch the art show, it's really pretty neat. And, yes?
Can you tell her a little bit about the interfaith at the sanctuary?
Oh, I'm gonna fi, I'm gonna finish this, the, it, I, I can talk to you about that at the end if you show that time, I'm gonna finish. I thought you were asking about the depot. So the, the light goes tonight until about ten. It starts when it gets dark. And then there's a celebration that starts at five and goes till ten, the depot's open again for tours. It's the birthday party, if you will, it turns a hundred today. And there's opportunities to get tours of the depot, to go up in the tower. And if you stay long enough, have cake and then watch the light show together. So I wanted to flag that. And then right below the depot is the new Keasley staircase. So we're asking people to park in the park and then you can walk up the street of, at Capitol. Or you can use, have you used this?
Yes.
The Keasley staircase?
It's a hundred and two steps.
Did I see you last night?
And it kicks your butt coming up, you can walk, but it does.
So I met a couple last night that was coming off of it, that wasn't you.
No, that wasn't me.
She had, she had the same hair color. And they told me the same thing, a hundred and two steps. Leave the park below and use the staircase up. And I encourage you to just check out the staircase at some point too. Neighbors are telling me they use it now to sit and watch the sunset. It's become not just a staircase that connects, I think, thirty-five hundred people to the park within that ten-minute walk. But it's actually become a community gathering place where last night, the couple told me they've met neighbors that they've always had, they never knew. Because people are taking breaks on the hundred-two steps.
It's a great, it's a stairmaster in the neighborhood. And it's great to be able to, instead of trying to cut down a dirt path, rather.
rather steed to get down to the park from where we are up off of Chris and Rim to take the stairs. It's lovely. So, yeah, well done.
Yeah, so maybe the types of investments they're trying to make in neighborhoods, um, to make sure that we have that opportunity to, um, enjoy the city, connect with people, um, as we grow, that we keep Boise Boise. And I appreciate, um, all that all of you have done to be a part of that. On Interfaith, um, they have to submit to reapply. Um, I don't know their timing on that, um, but they're gonna have to go through the process all over again. And Beth?
Oh, um, when does the jazz band start?
Oh, good question. Eight o'clock? No.
Can't whisper. I can't hear.
Oh, when does the jazz band start?
Okay, thank you.
I forgot that. Yes, there's like, we appreciate, we appreciate jazz bands is playing tonight. Um, people wanted it to just be festive dance lane. That is, does anybody know? Chloe's looking at a, um, but thanks for that flag because like, that's the big part of it, is that there would be a band tonight. I think, I have a march maybe at six-thirty, so it might be, I think it's five. The band starts?
When the event starts.
The event starts at five.
I just had a quick question about the CHIPS Act. There's been some conversation about that potentially changing. I don't know if you, if, what, uh, the executives have-
Cameron, I'm, I'm laughing now because it's not funny, but it's just like, this feels so like, totally different topic.
Yeah, sorry, sorry.
No, that's okay.
So that conversation came up middle of March, but Trump administration was talking about that in conjunction with tariffs and maybe changing that. So I just, I hadn't heard anything else of updates. I didn't know if you had anything there.
What is it?
Sure, so I'll give a little bit of background and then I, I'll, I gotta do a rap because I've gotta, um, get back to City Hall by two. Uh, the CHIPS Act was the investment in, um, that was made in Micron to return memory ma- manufacturing to the US. Um, they committed to build in Boise, which they're already building, and then ultimately Syracuse for that grant that they got. Right now, they are, in my last conversations with them, and this will eventually bring about seventeen thousand ancillary jobs to the region. Um, it's several thousand on, on site once they're open. It's quite, it's that many as they build. But then there's the, kind of the, the chip ecosystem that'll create jobs for our kids and grandkids. Um, when I last spoke with them last week, they were still on track. They'd had conversations, um, with the administration. They've received their first investment. They're moving ahead as if, um, they always were.
Okay, thank you.
We are staying, um, closely engaged on that. I'm working with the delegation on it. We're in pretty constant communication, advocating for continuation of the investment that was committed.
Thanks.
And, um, sorry, Joe. Um, sorry, sorry, Joe.
Point of recognition, that's all. By any chance, were you able to be at a certain event on Monday evening at the Adam Center?
Oh, I was not. Nope.
There's, it's not every day that twelve thousand people rise to recognize and applaud a city mayor. That was you.
That was not all. Mostly because you're flying a certain flag.
The, I was, I was at, I was at Boise State with Boise State officials, CHIPS officials, Micron officials, other colleges, eleven universities from both the United States, many here, and Japan on workforce development is what I was doing that evening. Um, everybody's full go Cameron on, on what needs to be done here to build job opportunity, the workforce of the future, and then create that opportunity for our kids. And that matters. And this will be my kind of closing thing. Is that at Christmas this year, when my son came home, my kids are four and a half years apart. And when my son came home, I could not believe the number of, kind of like, overheard conversations between these twenty-one-year-olds about the internships and jobs they were so excited to find in Boise. That warmed my heart because I can't say the same conversations were happening with my daughter, who's four and a half years older, who's the same age as mine. And that's in a, in a time of our community, and these are cases of recent times, where our community has rallied around, like, looking at opportunity and jobs for the future. And that's a piece of it. In order to support economic opportunity, because I want my kids to come back. I also want them to be able to do whatever they wanna do. Wouldn't it be amazing if they came home? Um, and to hear that from folks was really exciting. Um, but then I also overheard conversations about how their thoughts on downtown Boise, safe, clean, so much stuff to do, on parks throughout the city. And this was chatter at different Christmas parties and, um, different things that we were at. And it made me realize even more how lucky it is that we have all called this place in. That as it's changed, we've all continued to do what we can to put people first, invest in our neighborhoods, um, create opportunity, not just incentive jobs, but whether it be trails along the grid all during the winter, so that's the way. Parks and pool are a hit on me, come into. Um, relationships with our officers that are here today that spend time right here at the school every day so that our neighbors, neighborhoods are safe. We're seeing that throughout the city. Um, and I think that we're really lucky in that sense. And it's not by accident. Um, and it's because of each and every one of you and your family, friends, and neighbors that come together like this, that look for ways to engage, whether at your block level or the city level or the region level, whatever it is. Um, and that's all part of it. All part of what makes Boise Boise. So thank you all very much, um, for coming together for a conversation. Really appreciate it. I'm honored to serve and look forward to it. If anyone was curious about the jazz band, it plays twice for six. The jazz band plays twice, first at six, then at seven. It's Carol, your mother, on March three. No, I'm your neighbor. I don't have a little.
Uh, I, I recognize.